Good evening, and welcome to the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Town Council of Zoning Board Appeals. Before we get started, and we have the call at work, please.
James Hebert.
President.
David Bork.
Here.
Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
Christine Snow.
Here.
Rudy Karen.
Here.
Richard Silkman.
Here.
And Peter Freylinger.
Here.
Excellent, and so the order of the agenda that we're going to have this evening, as you've noticed, we're not, we don't have any new appeals that we'll be discussing this evening. We will be going through the approval draft written decision from our November ninth meeting. We also have our roll call from the Minister of Management of Election Officers. Before we get started with the pledge of allegiance, though, I would like to entertain a motion to switch items six and seven on the agenda. I would like to have the election of officers done first before.
Thank you, thank you, Brian. I would like to have the election of officers done first before the growth management ordinance questionnaire, so that the new chair will facilitate our discussion of those growth management ordinance questions. Zoning board comments in a German, so do I have a motion for that? Mr. Bork.
So moved.
And is there a second?
A second.
And Mr. Karen seconds. All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that is unanimous, thank you. So first, let's kick this off. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the November ninth meeting minutes? And does anyone have any questions, comments, or edits that they would like to mention at this time? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Bork.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Karen seconds. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous, thank you. Next, we have the approval of the draft written decision heard at our November ninth meeting. This is appeal number two, seven, four, one. This is a practical difficulty variance appeal by Megan and William Bartholomew, a two-twenty-nine Black Point Road. Has everyone had a chance to review the findings of fact and the written decisions that were provided? Are there any questions? And I'm seeing no questions or comments from the board. All those in favor, excuse me, I'll entertain a motion to approve the draft written decision. Mr. Bork.
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
And Mr. Karen seconds. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. And next, we will have the election of officers. So at this time, what we, what we do here is, do we do chair or vice chair first, Brian?
You could do chair first.
Let's do chair.
Nominations for chair.
Yeah, so right now, we'd like to open the floor for nominations for Chair of the zoning Board for the two thousand twenty-three calendar year. Mr. Bork.
Yes, I wish to nominate Peter Freylinger as chair.
Mr. Freylinger, do you accept?
I do.
Excellent. Do we have any other nominations for the chair that we'd like to see at this time? Okay, seeing none. All those, I guess, we need a motion, all right. I entertain a motion to, what's the technical term I'm looking for?
To elect.
Yeah, I'm looking, thank you. It's been stated, but the word I'm looking for is escaping me. But I'll entertain a motion to elect Mr. Peter Freylinger as Chair of the zoning board for the remainder of this meeting and for the two thousand twenty-three calendar year. Mr. Bork.
So moved.
And is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Karen seconds. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is.
I'm allowed.
You're allowed to vote for yourself, certainly. That is, that is unanimous. Excellent.
You want him to do the election for the vice chair?
I would, actually.
Okay.
So at this time, Mr. Freylinger, why don't you come up and take the seat of the chair, and I will swap spots with you.
Actually. Yep, this is for a pro, and Karen, it's official, so congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a pleasure to succeed a wonderful board chair. I'll believe that. Richard.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your support and hope that we can at least match the fantastic performance of our, again, our past chairman. So thank you very much. And we'll have a couple words for that at the end of the session, too. We'll now go about the nominating process for vice chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair? Yes.
I'd like to nominate Christine Snow for vice chair.
Ms. Snow, do you accept the nomination?
I certainly do.
Then do we have a motion?
I certainly do.
Then do we have a motion to elect Ms. Snow as vice chair?
So moved.
Wow. I think I said it first. Is there a second?
A second.
Thanks, Richard. And all in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes unanimously. Gosh, that's fun. Okay, and the next item is the growth management ordinance questionnaire and responses. I think we got a copy of this in our materials, and Brian, are you going to be walking us through this, or how would you, how would you like to progress with this?
That's an excellent question. Have you, have you gone through it with the long-range planning committee?
I have, I was about to say, yes, I've been through this with the long-range planning committee.
I think you have the, I think you have the experience with it, you could lead the discussion then.
Fair enough. So yeah, to give folks some background, this is part of the GMO revision process that town council is embarking on. And all of the committees, and I think all of the committees are going through this survey process, along with individual responses from the, from the town council members and the administrative department heads. Autumn led us through it for long-range planning, she did a really good job, but really what this came down to was less a sort of question-by-question response. What we did was, we started on that basis, but we found that it kind of naturally led towards a more open discussion. And I think that was the intent of the survey process as well. So not necessarily that we have to make sure that we've checked the box on each question, but have a discussion that can then be summarized in our minutes and added to the overall discussion and survey kind of compilation process. So like I said, we'll, we'll start with a couple questions, and then we'll just see where the conversation goes, if that makes sense. I think in terms of order here, I would say simply raise your hand, or say, Mr. Chairman, or something like that, and it'll, and just start talking. So rather than kind of do anything formal of that Robert's Rules of Order sort of thing, this is more of an open conversation. So as a summary, the GMO is one of the more controversial elements of our town planning process at this point. The current GMO allows for one hundred and forty-four total permits each year, no more thirty than which, of which can be in the rural districts, and it says west of Turnpike here, but it really is the RF and RFM zoning districts across town, most of which are west of the Turnpike, but not all of which. And then no more than twenty, twenty percent of the total permits can be in a common scheme in a given year, except that no more than thirty could be part of the downs, the crossroads planned districts. There are also exemptions, and this is an important one, there's an allocation process, there are exemptions that are written into the GMO itself, and then an exemption process which can allow exemptions beyond what is exempted within, within the ordinance. So all repair and replacement units and gift locks are exempted, that's often become, come before us, so that's natural. All affordable housing units, and importantly, these are affordable housing units as designated by our state ordinance for affordable housing. So there's distinction between affordable housing and sometimes workforce housing, which is, this is only for the affordable housing, which is for housing costs no more than, for, for people, households earning no more than eighty percent of the median wage in Cumberland County. All manufactured housing units in a licensed community, that's covered in a different part of the zoning code. Up to one hundred one-bedroom multifamily units, and this exists as part of the ordinance until the end of two thousand twenty-four, so for another two years. Up to ten workforce housing permits per year, and this is, again, is different than the affordable housing units. And then up to two hundred and eighty-nine mixed reuse or multifamily units in the crossroads planned development. So with that, the survey asked us a number of questions. We'll start with that first one. Does the number of new residential units constructed each year directly affect your board or committee? If yes, how?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Maybe I'm missing something here, but we're, we're a board of appeals. Whatever the ordinance is, we either get appeals or not based upon what people want to do with the ordinance. So it doesn't seem like many of these questions are relevant for us.
That's kind of what I thought, too, Richard. It was kind of one of those, because of the nature of our board, we, we, we don't really intersect at all with this kind of an ordinance. But I think they wanted to hear what we thought, whether that makes sense. And one of the questions that came up, too, was, is the zone, and this came up in the long-range planning committee meeting, not sort of in general, but is the, would the zoning board have a role potentially in the exemption process or the exception process? So again, as we go through the other questions, that might come out, but I think you're right. For that first question, the answer is really no. It's a fairly simple one.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I agree with Mr. Silkman. I mean, in a way, you know, we, we, new residential units constructed, constructed each year should be constructed appropriately, meeting all ordinances and codes that are available, so they wouldn't be constructed in a manner that would put them in violation, requiring them to come before us. Are these questions, my second question, are these being sent out to all boards?
Yes.
Okay, so not, not specifically directed towards us, but as a board, they're just asking us to chime in as well.
Yeah.
And department.
The shellfish committee, for example, is also getting this one.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Understood.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I only see two things that are applicable. Really, first, I'd just like to make comment, that the underlying point here is that everything has been halted for six months.
That's right.
If I understand this correctly.
That's correct, yeah.
So that means that all the exemptions here, yes, is, these in particular are halted for six months, so none of this can go on. Is that correct?
That's, I don't know, and Brian, that.
No, we're still issuing growth.
Yes, there are certain types, but I'm talking about the exemptions, though.
The exemptions?
Yeah, like the repair and replacement units, that one will directly affect us, you know, if there's a potential zoning issue that comes before it.
To be honest, to be honest, though, I don't believe that we have required growth permits for replacement anymore. It's only for new, new units. So I'm not really sure.
Well, we have, we do have a lot of them who wish to, a lot of applicants come before us who wish to basically tear down and replace, or to expand.
Right.
You know, and really, you know, that might fall into the first one, repair and replacement units and gift lots. And the second one that comes to mind is shoreline zoning. We've got the, a clock running on shoreline zoning, you know, where people want to get new construction in, and that's a tough one to approve, of course, because, you know, it's undue hardship. And once, you know, once the new standards come into place, then that means that it's going to be much, much more difficult for people to get any kind of permitting approved.
Yeah, I think you might be intermingling shoreline zoning with floodplain.
Yes.
With the new flood maps. So those two are really two separate animals. But some, sometimes related, because the properties may be both.
So in that sense, it does impact us. I mean, there, there are some potential, you know, cases that would have come before us in the next six months that won't be coming before us anymore in those categories.
One thing that, and I, the question I think we might want to raise is the exemptions. I think something like that, where a new home is being constructed on an existing lot, would be able to use the existing allocation, and those are still available. So the hundred and forty-four total permits are still available each year. It's the exemptions and the exemption process that's been halted by the six-month review, as I understood it from, from how Autumn described it.
I was only referring to the things that directly impact our board. So yeah, obviously, there are a whole bunch of allocations in here which are halted for the six months. But, you know, the only ones that I see that have any impact are all on the ones I mentioned.
Yeah.
The floodplain, is that right, correct, right, Brian? Yeah. And the, you know, the first one, which is repair and replacement.
Gotcha.
You know, if there's zoning issues, you know, connected to either one.
And I think where we would see it as a direct impact, you're saying, David, is that we now simply would not see those coming before the committee?
Yes, and it also affects those people being able to come before us.
Right.
Yeah, and that's, that's a, that is an adverse impact on the people in this community.
Yeah, okay, okay. We should, we'll note that as part of the response. Any other comments on that first one, or thoughts? Okay, then we'll move on. Does the effect of residential units constructed vary based on the type of housing? Yes, and why? And again, this is related to us as a zoning board of appeals. To me, this struck me as being a, there, it's almost a, this is not an impact on the zoning board.
Mr. Chairman, I would also just classify it as not applicable.
Yeah, not applicable, I think that's right.
Yeah.
That's what the shellfish committee is going to have all day.
Exactly.
Yeah.
What aspects of the current GMO annual allocation do you believe work well or not, and why? Now, this will be an interesting one. The long-range planning committee had a substantial thought process on this one, but it relates to our stewardship of the comprehensive plan. I'm not sure the zoning board has an opinion on this, and as a, as a quasi-judicial body, it might not be appropriate for us to have an opinion on this. Any thoughts?
This member has no opinion.
Yeah, okay.
I have a strong opinion, but I don't think it's appropriate.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. It's, if you don't have a strong opinion on the GMO, you're, you're amazing that you're standing in Scarborough, so yes. So, okay, what aspects of the current exemption, GMO exemptions do you believe work well or well not, and why? Again, I think this is, I'm not sure it's appropriate for the zoning board to express an opinion on this one.
Well, I think the point that I made earlier really falls into this category.
Yeah, gotcha.
It's not, it wasn't really in category one.
Right.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay, actually, that's, we'll make that, we'll make that note as well, David, thank you. Now, do you think an exemption process is beneficial for the town? Why aren't we not? This is different than the exemptions that are laid out in the ordinance. This is the process by which somebody could go to council and get a general exemption, or not a general, but a specific exemption that's not listed. Again, should we have an opinion as a ZBA? I don't think so.
I, I wouldn't think so. I mean, we, we, you know, the zoning board operates in a very small box compared to planning, long-term planning in town council. You know, we operate on just the appeals that, that come before us, the information in the packets, you know, we're not doing outside research, we're not engaging before meetings with any folks from the town or anything like that, so I have a hard time thinking of a reason for us to respond to something other than not really applicable.
Yeah, I think I agree with that. I think that really fits for the other items as well. Yeah, that, that last one, I think, is another statement where we can say our role as a ZBA is a relatively narrow one. As a quasi-judicial body, it relates exclusively to examining whether applicants meet the specific elements of our zoning ordinance or the available appeals or special use permits under the ordinance, full stop. And we look to the town council and the town to establish the rules of the, of the zoning ordinance that will govern our, our process.
I would offer, Mr. Chair, if I may, the only, only thing that comes to mind on this, and I haven't given it a great deal of thought on number eight, would be, and I think it was mentioned earlier, if somehow the decision-making process fell on this board, or let me, let me back up, an appeal to the decision-making process could fall toward, to this board. For example, if I was the one to deny a growth permit, and, and somebody wanted to file an administrative appeal, then the board would be hearing that appeal.
Gotcha.
The other thing, and I'm not sure if this is the case, if somebody was denied by council, let's say, on one of the exemptions, could they appeal that to the Board of Appeals? And I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
But those are, those are two situations where it could, I don't know if you'd call it directly or indirectly impact, or, or the principles of this committee or board in its decision-making would be in effect, if you would.
All right, that was a question I had. If you were, if you were to deny a growth management permit, or growth permit under, say, one of the exemptions here, at the end of the six-month window ends, and here's, people are coming in and saying, no, hey, I want to put up the eleventh workforce housing unit this year, or I want, or I want to put on the tenth workforce housing, and you say no, do you have a basis which they could appeal on, or is it just, do you have discretion to deny an exemption, or?
It's a great question. My, my, my first blush would be that in chat, in section five of the zoning ordinance, an administrative appeal can be brought by any decision or ruling made by the building inspector or code enforcement officer. So I would, I would guess that if my, if my decision was sort of the final decision, and it didn't get bumped to council, for example, to, to, to decide whether they fit, you know, because some of this is under, the exemption process is really granted by council, I think, for the most part.
Yeah, the exemption process is, is council.
Right.
That is true.
So I don't, I don't know that it would come to, I, I think in that case, I wouldn't be the one making that decision anyway. They'd first have to get that exemption from council in those cases. And frankly, with the modifications that were made to the growth management ordinance a couple years ago, I don't really think that there's going to be much chance for somebody to appeal. For example, it used to be you could, you could apply for a growth permit long before you ever had a building permit application. Now you have to apply at the same time. So you, your project is shovel-ready, you're not.
Right.
You're not banking that growth permit for later. That was a problem, because somebody, those were only good for, I think it was, six months. And at the end of six months, if they hadn't yet built that house, their permit expired. And we were forever getting complaints from developers and builders, because their situation had changed, gee, they missed it by a week, and, you know, so those were kind of, but I don't, I don't see a lot of opportunity, quite frankly, right now, for me to be in that position, or our department necessarily to be in that position, because a lot of the changes now fall to council, or could fall to the town manager when it's housing affordability, because he's the one that determines that.
Gotcha.
So I don't think it would come to the board, but I just bring that up, that if in some way they change the ordinance or set it up in a way that it does fall on my department or me to make that determination, and somebody wants to appeal that determination, if it doesn't go their way, then it could come to the board. But again, it's a long shot, I would say.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Brian.
Sure.
So is the planning board subject to appeal to our board?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, for example, if the planning board makes a decision, and the applicant is denied, do they, can they come before us to appeal the decision made by the planning board? Because I don't, some of you spell is that is the case. I'm not sure if that's in our code.
I think they could. I don't know that it's ever happened.
Yeah.
But I, I think technically they could.
Well, again, I go back to the point, you know, we're putting in a six months, you know, delay, you know, no exemptions, and, and we may have some that come up, and I don't know if decisions made by planning board are relevant.
Honestly, Dave, I'm not really sure. I'm not sure if that's possible. I'd have to go back to the ordinance and see what authority. Sometimes those, it's only, it's only decisions of the code officer, and other decisions would have to be taken to, to Superior Court. I don't know.
I'm going to propose that we, we'll fill out the, this sort of a survey as, as written with the, with the responses that we got, most of which are going to be not, not applicable or inappropriate for the zoning board to opine, or something, something along those lines. But Dave, we'll definitely include some of the comments you've made around the, the replacement units in particular, and some of the other things. I think we'll also include a, a request for clarification of what a GMO appeals process would look like, so that we can understand what a role would be, if any, and so we can understand what our responsibilities would be going forward.
Good point.
And then we'll include comments on this discussion in the minutes, but I don't think we need to formally approve a, a response. So do we need to bring this back to the, onto the board and?
Well, yeah, I was asked actually a question for you. What did you do with the long-range planning?
Uh, well, long-range planning committee, we are incorporating a response in the minutes, and that's it.
That's it, you didn't actually put responses on to this?
No, and part of the reason was, Autumn was in the room with us, and she was taking notes and saying, got it, I'll fill out the form for you, and.
So I want to, I want to ask, Doreen, do you feel, hearing this in recorded meeting, do we have enough to, in the minutes, to be able to formulate responses to each of these, or is there anything that you feel we probably might want to clarify or get clarification?
I'm going to contain.
Okay, so, because I want to remind the board that they're asking for this to be returned to them by December twenty-third. So we're not going to meet again before.
Correct.
We have to do this. So I will, we'll gladly put that note in there, that we'd like clarification on the appeal process, but it's not going to, it's not going to affect the response.
Gotcha.
They're looking for your responses. So I guess I'd like to, just for clarification, one last time, were there any of these numbered items on this, on this questionnaire that you felt were, were applicable, or that there was a response needed? Because the rest of them were pretty much not applicable, or?
Number four, only.
Number four? Okay.
And that's specifically with regard to exemptions for, that, that may impact appeals that would be brought before us?
Okay, so that was where the clarification on the appeals process comes in.
That's right.
And then there was some, which one was it, Dave, that, or somebody had the comment about the replacement units?
Well, that was, that's what I meant, for number four.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the way it's written, it has a negative, a potential negative impact on the board and the members of the public who might be appealing.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I feel like number seven is pretty vague, and we should probably write a response on it. What does your committee board or department identify as a public benefit?
Yeah, and this one, just to clarify that one, and, and we'll do it, but the current growth management ordinance requires the exemption process that council looks at to identify a public benefit specifically that would enable them to approve the exemption. So they don't apply to the exemptions on affordable housing units and things like that, for example. It applies for when you come with a bespoke exemption through the town council process. So just to clarify, if that helps.
But to Shelley's point, I think that's a valid thing that we probably ought to get in. get an opinion from the board on what you feel are possible public benefit.
I just feel like that's the one that we can actually write a response on. I don't know that I have a great response right now for it.
Gotcha.
But I, that's the one that I think I, almost every committee can fill out.
That's fair. Yeah, putting my, I'm, the Long Range Planning Committee had an easy response for this one, which was basically, it aligns, a public benefit is a project that aligns with the stated objectives of the Town Comprehensive Plan. And since the LRPC kind of owns the plan, as it were, that was an easy one for us. For the zoning board, yeah, I'm not, I don't know.
I would think it has to fit in with what our mission is, which is very narrow. I don't know how we define anything.
Yeah.
This is a public benefit of what? The growth management ordinance?
I don't think it necessarily pertains to the board's mission. I think they're looking, you know, they're just looking for this committee or this board's opinion on what public benefit is.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
And it is vague in the current ordinance, which is just that the town council must identify a public benefit.
Yeah.
Lowercase p, lowercase b, so it's not even a defined term, when, when considering an exemption through the exemption process.
Why would our board have an opinion on that? I can understand why each of us individually may. But I don't understand why the board would have an opinion on that.
That's what I'm struggling with, too, Richard.
Because I feel like we need to be as objective and sort of neutral as possible. You know, because we treat every application and appeal and any administrative appeal or anything that comes through on the basis of merits of what that application is, and not, and, you know, we don't, we're not coming in with a, you know, a certain agenda to, to, you know, have more of X and less of Y, so to speak.
That's what, I, I'm, as a zoning board, I could, I mean, I understand why the, actually, this is a good one to go to the Shellfish Committee. Shellfish Committee, they have a view that a public benefit is not damaging the shellfish fisheries, and that could be their statement of where, of the public benefits that they would want to see. Again, though, for a zoning board, I...
I would say one thing. Maybe we could say, with regard to the growth management ordinance, a public benefit that we can see with that, that we want to make sure is upheld to avoid, you know, applications that are coming before us, is making sure that the town authorized permits to properties and new construction that meet the current codes and ordinances of the town. That way, they theoretically would never have to come before us for anything.
In other words, not propagating nonconformity.
Yeah, not propagating, not promulgating, however you want to, however you want to phrase it, but, you know, reducing, reducing nonconformity, which is our mission.
That is our mission, yeah, actually, and that's, I think that's probably the public benefit we would look for, so that we're not facing additional applications where we have to make a judgment about conformance.
And maybe, if you wanted to, you know, with regard to reducing nonconformity, you had the Higgins Beach zoning ordinance revisions that took place, because we kept seeing application after application from those folks. And that is a public benefit now, because it's less time and effort and energy spent by the town, the applicants and residents, to going through this whole process. So, I mean, the ultimately reducing nonconformity, I think, is a great answer in this, in this aspect.
I agree. Yep, okay, that makes sense. So, Doreen, you think you've got enough then to, I think there's enough there to pull together a response, and we can submit that, get our homework assignment done in time, and then we'll add this to the minutes for next, next month, and formally endorse that. But thank you, everyone. I appreciate, I'm sure the town appreciates the discussion, and we could move forward, unless there's more comments, we can move forward. Terrific. We're now on to item eight of the agenda, zoning board comments.
I have a question.
Yeah, Shelley.
When are, or who makes the decision of if Mr. Silkman and I will become?
Well, timely, as if ripped from the day's headlines.
Oh!
Let's go. I would, yeah, so, so I have some comments.
Thank you, Brian. Please take us through.
I did receive from the Appointments Committee, actually through Tody Justice, a town clerk, the Appointments Committee made their decision on December sixth to move Michelle Stevenson from first alternate to full-voting member with a term to expire in 2023, and to reappoint Richard Silkman, but move him from second alternate to first alternate with a term to expire in 2025, and to appoint Kyle Noonan as second alternate with a term to expire in 2025. So we have a new alternate member, Kyle Noonan, who was appointed. Mr. Karen apparently did not get his letter into the town clerk in time, so we don't have a replacement yet for him. But he did, he did do so, and I was told tonight, just prior to the meeting, by our town manager, that the Appointments Committee met tonight, and they have appointed Joseph Doherty to the board. I'm not sure whether they appointed him as a full-voting member or as, I'm not sure. Where the alternates are still fairly new, I'm not sure that they moved any more alternates into full-voting members. So I, I'm going to assume that Mr. Doherty is going to be a full-voting member.
Okay.
But I'm not sure of that.
We'll look for clarity for that from the town for the general meeting.
Um, so, yeah, well, I think everybody will be sworn in and hopefully here, and, uh, Mr. Silkman, I don't know, I know you're going to be out of town for a while. Is that going to start with the January meeting?
Yeah, I won't make January, February or March.
Okay, so, so, and my suggestion to Mr. Silkman was, because he's going to miss a few meetings through the winter anyway, and I assume this is sort of an annual thing, that you go away for a few months in the winter.
Yeah.
Oh, it hasn't? Okay. That's fair. And so my suggestion was for him to stay as an alternate member for now, but should the board make up change in the future, and depending on your personal situation and how you feel about it, then we could revisit that at a later date, if that sounds fair. But I love to have you stay with the board and value your, your input.
I mean, I would say there have been, as you've seen throughout the year, there are plenty of opportunities for alternates to be voting members, where we've had down as low as four people in a meeting at one time, so. Yes, there will be, there will be certainly opportunities there.
It is helpful to know that we will have a full, full slate for the 2023 year.
Yeah, yeah, it should be, it should be fine. So does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. The other thing I would point out to the board, I think you have in your packets, is Doreen's provided us with a, sort of a data sheet on, or a report, if you will, on the activity that the boards had over the period from January one to December thirty-first. Oh, you didn't include it. I'm sorry. Well, we have that available. Should anyone want it, we can forward it to you.
That'd be great.
I'm sorry, I sort of assumed it was in the back. You only give me stuff after you give it to the board. But, yeah, we can get that to you, so.
That'd be great. Terrific.
It's good, good information. The only other thing I would like to now do, and I'm going to, I'm going to have you do this for me, we'd like to present our past chair, James Hebert, with a token of our appreciation for his, how many years?
Seven years and seven months.
And how many of those were as chair?
Two.
Okay.
And then two as vice chair.
Okay.
How many minutes and days?
A lot. A lot.
Pass this right on over to you.
That's very lovely. And I would like to entertain a motion to thank Mr. Hebert for his years of service, and congratulate him on having one Wednesday night a month free dot.
So moved.
Seconded? Thank you, Anchorage. And can I see a show of hands? Thank you very much, James. Thank you very much. It is a spell. And if there are no further comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, yes, I think we're, I just want to make sure I got all the things that I had on my list. Yes, I think we're good.
So moved. And a second? All those in favor? The motion is approved. Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.
Thank you guys so much.
Exactly.